Do you know what Alex likes?
I've been kind of feeling that.
Okay, you don't know?
I don't.
Is it really?
I thought you would have known.
No, you didn't tell me.
Palmer said that it's somebody.
Palmerism?
To my liking.
Did he say that it's not him?
I'm pretty sure it's not.
Isn't Ella dating somebody?
She does date people. Like after she started dating somebody, the guy, he like still liked her. And they started dating like a lot.
Yeah.
He's like, yeah. It's just, I don't know, moved on to my friend group. So like, who can it be? We only go to see him talking to like Ella, maybe.
I don't think it's maybe. I would be taking my surprise.
Yeah, I thought I did. Did they? Oh. Well, and all I had to do was push a button. Okay, are we set to go? We got agreed? Welcome to the October 25th, 2023, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. My name is Jerry Strauss. I am sitting in for our permanent chair, who is unavailable. So hopefully it's for this meeting only. I'd like to just cover a few comments. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org. And it is important, you know, that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally and regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there is one public hearing. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for the public hearing can call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 5115164. Then press star one on your telephone keypad when you would like to get into the queue to speak. An operator will introduce you when it is your turn. Please state your full name and address before speaking. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. This is regarding the public hearing. Remember, you do not need to call in comments live tonight if you already provided them feedback otherwise. Also, do not try not to repeat information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order and we will move to roll call. Liz, can you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Felton?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Padilla?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Schultz?
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Here.
Chair Strauss?
Here, thank you. First item, approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Move in second and let's vote by saying aye to approve the meeting agenda.
Aye.
Agenda approved. We will move to the approval of meeting minutes. It looks like we are looking at the minutes for both the September 27th and October 11th meeting. That's true, okay. Could I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for both the September 27th and October 11th? I move to approve the meeting minutes. And we have a second.
Second.
Okay, I moved and seconded. Meeting minutes have been approved.
All in favor? Do we have a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Let's, we can vote on approval of meeting minutes, all by approving by saying aye?
Aye.
So moved. Minutes have been approved. Okay, now we move to community comments. The community comments is for in-person testimony only. We will now hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak up to three minutes. Please give your full name and address. The green light on the podium will turn on when you start and when you have 30 seconds remaining, you will get a yellow and then red light will, your time is up. Do we have anybody here for community comments? Okay, please come forward. Okay.
My name is Linda Schmitz. I live at 6483 Berry Road. And we have a lot of traffic on our road. And I have a feeling that people are driving faster than the 25 miles an hour. I just noticed recently there is a speed limit sign when you come off of 66 going north. Just, it's just slightly down on Berry. And I don't know if there's any other ones in that area or if there's anything on 65th Street, but we do get a lot of traffic there. And basically, we have no sidewalks at this point in time for most of the Berry Road. And I'm just curious if there's some way that there could be something, either some more research done as to how fast people are really going? And then maybe a few more signs and maybe something signal your turns and stuff because there's a lot of that too, where they'll stop at the 65th Street and then you go, well, either they go on left or they're going right. So I'm just wondering if there's something, a study that could be done to see how fast people are really going.
Thank you.
And that's kind of all I, how about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, I'm not, is this something then that staff would then follow up on?
Yeah, I can address that. We do have a traffic safety committee and a traffic safety coordinator who is actually, we got involved in this variance request for sightlines and safety. I can put her in contact with that group and they do studies like this in regard to speed. So I can, I'll be in touch.
And you will get the contact information? That'll be good? Is that okay? Good, thank you. Anybody else to appear? Doesn't look like we have anyone. I guess, do I need a motion to close public? We're just set, we'll move on then, okay? Okay, that ends the community comment portion. We are now going to move on to our one public hearing, which is regarding 6500 Berry Road Monument Sign Setback Variance. And Community Director, Development Director Teague will present.
Okay, yes, thank you Chair, members of the commission. This is a variance or a revision to a variance that you all approved this past April. It is for a sign for a medical building that's under construction at the intersection of 65th and Berry Road. So the variance that was approved was to locate a monument sign 14 and a half feet off of the paved portion of the street. Code requires a 20-foot setback. The building itself is setback 18 feet. So variance is required to get a sign in this location. When they went to install the sign, they discovered that there's a gas line that runs through this area that was preventing them from putting it in the original location. So they're, they have shifted the sign over, moved it a little closer to the street. And the request this evening is a variance from 20 feet to 12 feet. Note that the line, it looks like the sign is still, has some issues with the location of the line. But they say that they can adjust the footings, that it would not impact the gas line in this location with that little encroachment over it. But it was an issue in the other site, so that's causing the shift in location. Here's a picture of the building as you see it today. The original sign location over in this location. And the new proposal would be generally in this area. One of the concerns that we received on the Better Together feedback was concerns over sightline, sightline with traffic moving along 65th and Berry Road. We did have our traffic safety coordinator go out and look at the site and he's concluded that there would be no sightline issues for traffic. So this, there should, there would be no safety issues where the sign is proposed. All other code requirements are met in terms of size. It's just the setback that is being requested for the variance. So looking at our variance criteria, the three criteria, the purpose and intent of allowing signage is to prevent causing impacts on safety or sightlines. Again, as I mentioned, we don't believe that there is any safety or sightline issues here. In looking at the practical difficulty test, we believe that this is reasonable, meets all of our size requirements. It is, it won't impact that gas line with this new location and that gas line is the reason for the relocation. Variance has already been granted on the site once. This issue is unique from other properties and we don't believe that it would alter the character of the neighborhood. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions as outlined. And we do have a representative here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carrie. Any members have questions for Director Teague? No? Oh, yes, Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, could you go to the diagram and explain? I'm kind of confused by what the former location is and what the current, what the proposed location is.
Yeah, so the former location here has the 14-foot setback. Yeah, that is confusing. It looks like it's moved farther back. Perhaps we could have the applicant.
Yeah, thank you, Planning Commission. Yeah, my name's Rodney Hens. I'm with MSP Commercial. I represent on behalf of the owner of the facility, Body Group. So initially, yes, drawings are probably not perfectly to scale. So you'll see there's two areas of the building. One is 18 feet from the street and the setback or the jog in the building is roughly 20 feet. So we've moved the sign over to the east to put it in the area that's further back. But initially, we were looking, we were hoping we could get it 14 feet, 14.6 and with the gas line. And there's also some fiber and other things in that area that we're working around. So we've had to push it a little bit closer and that we feel we can get to basically 12 feet. When we do, when they do put the footing in, we are going to try to push it back as far as we can, closest to the building. But until we dig and put the footing in and get the exact location of that gas line, that's kind of what we're working with.
Okay, but I mean, they've got, there's multiple drawings here and it's like option one, option two. But there's multiple option twos and multiple option ones. So I'm a little confused as to what's the, I mean, I see one where it's oriented perpendicular to the building and it's 20 feet away. Yeah, and then one where it's 14.6.
Yep, the, our initial variance, which was approved previously by the council, was 14 foot six. Orientation's always remained the same. We do have another monument sign on the east side that's orientated the other direction. And that's setback the 20-foot requirement. I'm not sure which documents you have that you're looking at.
Is this, what's on the screen here? This is what's proposed at 12 feet? So maybe it's the 14-foot diagram that's not accurate.
Okay, what's, do we have that diagram?
Because this appears to be closer to the street than.
Because we have, I see option one, option two, option two.
Yes, that, the original drawing probably showed it closer than that because it wasn't quite to scale when they did it. So since then, now that we've got the street, the building's up, the sidewalks are in, we have exact layout and location of where we're going to locate it.
So the, okay, because our diagram, this isn't our diagrams. This is quite, so this is the original one?
Go back one slide.
I'm really confused here.
Yes, this was, the 14 foot six was the original drawing for the original variance application.
So it's 14 feet from the street, from the curb?
Correct.
Okay, and then the one you're suggesting, can you, I'm sorry, go to that one?
Is 12 feet.
Okay, so, so it's a two-foot difference, two and a half foot difference?
Correct. Yep, and we've adjusted all the landscaping accordingly with this layout around the monument sign to bring in some smaller plantings around it to blend it in with all the other landscaping that we're doing on the site.
So, so how far is it from the sidewalk? So I guess I'm trying.
Approximately two feet. The sidewalk is 10 foot from the curb.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a six-foot sign. So basically, two foot from the curb, two foot from the building. And it's a six-foot wide sign.
Yes, in the new drawing, it does. I have one question. So that, so that stop sign is in between the curb and the sidewalk? Closer to the, yes, there I see it. And so when the traffic engineer went out there, he's like, okay, this is going to be closer to the building, people are going to be able to see the stop sign. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is for me.
Anybody else? I had one. Carrie, well, Mr. Hens, maybe you can handle this also. The sign is the same as what was approved?
Correct.
The previous submitted, I mean, so all we're talking about is the location, but it's the same dimensions and same.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Yes.
This question is more for the city. The 20-foot setback requirement was the original intent, intent of the 20-foot setback? Was it really for sightlines?
Mainly for sightlines, correct.
Okay, okay. All right, and the, yeah, okay, thank you.
So move to the public hearing, okay? This is a public hearing. We will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony to participate. You can call in now at 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 5115164. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak and please give your full name and address. Lauren, do we have anybody indicated?
We don't right now.
Okay, yes, yes, come forward, please.
I just, I'm.
We had your name there, so okay, we'll move.
I'm thinking if you show the picture here and you show the actual, where the sidewalk and stuff is and show them where the sign is, I think I'll get a better understanding. Because I'm assuming the sign is going to be like right in here, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because then I think, you know, that way they know compared to where, you know, looking at this, could get a better understanding of where the sign is supposed to be. Because just looking at the graph, it's kind of like. And, and, and I know the building because I've been walking around it ever since it's been going up, so I know everything that's going on over there. But yeah, I mean, I can see where they, because where the gas line is and stuff, but they don't want it, wouldn't want it there. And so they're just moving it up like maybe what, 10 feet or something from where it originally was supposed to be, I'm guessing, something like that, 10, 15 feet or something?
12 feet.
Huh?
2 feet.
Just 2 feet this way? Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, it's just sometimes looking at a graph, it's hard to figure out sometimes what it is compared to an actual picture.
Okay, yes, thank you. Lauren, did we have anybody called in?
No, we don't have anyone who has called in.
Okay. Safe to call?
I think it's safe to proceed since we've had a person.
Do I need a motion to close public? Okay, I will accept a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, well, that concludes our public hearing and boy, we are just moving along here. Okay. Oh, yeah, we're on to chair and member comments.
I think we have, we have our comment.
Details, I'm sorry, guys. All right, I would entertain a motion to, okay. Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I got confused. Okay, I'm going to bring it back up here to the, to the board for discussion on this matter. Okay, thank you. Anybody has a comment?
No, I mean, I think the request is reasonable, like staff said. I mean, we want everybody to be safe, we want to avoid the gas line. I'm glad you found it before you dug and it's only a couple of feet. So I'm in favor and of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Felton. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would, I would also agree. You know, I was going back to the original approval that we made and I think this building was, was built much closer to the curb initially, which got us to start looking at the initial approval of the 14-foot variance and we approved that because it made complete sense. My initial concern was now that we're moving it two feet closer to the curb, if that would have been a safety issue of some kind. But I think based on the traffic study and the city going out and looking at it and they concluded that there is no real concern with sightlines. That was very reassuring for me, which makes this less of a, of an issue. So it's just two feet forward and two feet to the east, I think, is the new positioning to accommodate for the gas line. And to Commissioner Felton's perspective, I think safety has to be really important and making sure that we don't disrupt the infrastructure that's under there or being very mindful of it is, is, makes complete sense to me. A natural barrier, I would say, is of course the sidewalk, right? So this applicant, you know, the sidewalk would essentially prevent anything from going across it. So there's no, that's like the natural limit. And so when I was asking earlier about what's the reason for the 20-foot setback, it's really for sightlines, right? And so once that requirement has been met, I think this is something that's very reasonable. So I'll be most likely here in favor of approving this, this additional variance, knowing that, you know, I don't hope, you know, there's not something else that gets discovered that I have to ship this around a third time. And we said, do you want to make sure that the infrastructure is safe, folks are safe and, you know, this sign is not going to be causing any kind of traffic issue? So I'll be in favor of approving.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, anybody else down here? I will, oh, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so my concern is, is how close it is to the sidewalk more than anything else. You know, it's getting pretty close to the sidewalk and, you know, sidewalks are already, you know, pedestrians are having to fight for whatever space they have. I mean, you have overgrown bushes or whatever that take in space on the sidewalk. Two feet's really pretty close to the sidewalk, it kind of bothers me. I don't know, I mean, is there, has there any other design for the sign that could be done that where it would, it could be kept where the previous approval was? I'm just sort of, I'm not real happy with how close it is to the sidewalk. That's my concern.
I suppose, sorry, I'm jumping in here and maybe I have a question for the owners there up again. So the footing right now is centered below the sign?
Actually, we will. We are adjusting the footing appropriately. It's a sonnet tube footing. And then we are modifying the base of the, the sign itself, the cabinet, to put the footing in a location that works around the utilities that are currently there. And then we are modifying the base to push the sign back as far as we can and still support it appropriately.
Okay, so the footing is going to be offset already?
Correct.
To some extent?
Correct, it's not technically in the center because we are modifying it to make the cabinet work and push the sign back. We know we can meet the 12-foot requirement. Once we put the footing in, we will push it back as far as we can to get the greatest distance from the curb that we can. So the hope is it's further back. We all understand that because we've talked about it with the design team and our sign manufacturer. But based on the current conditions and what we know and the other utilities with the fiber and the gas, the 12-foot is what we know we can, we can make work. And if we can push it further back, we will.
And the sign itself, isn't that heavy? But it's any kind of wind load that might push on the sign a little bit?
Yes, it's not very heavy. It's a, it's a metal cabinet.
Yeah. So they might be able to push it a little farther than the.
Correct, that is the intent. But until we put the footing in, then we'll adjust the base and the cabinet that it's designed to fit on.
Thank you. Can't protrude more than seven inches.
Is there? Not that I'm aware of. Certainly if it were, you know, interfering with, you know, in the sidewalk area, but none that I'm, I'm aware of.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended sign setback variance requested by the applicant, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving this variance, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, thank you. Thank you.
One minute, just so it's recorded.
I'm sorry, yes, so it was unanimous? I'm sorry. I'll get everything right. Okay, that would be?
Four.
Four to one? Oh, that's a way, so five to one?
Yeah.
Five to one, okay. Thank you. Okay. I can't really mess that up anymore, all right? I think that concludes our, that item there. We are now moving on to chair and member comments. I do not have anything, any members would like to, go ahead, Commissioner Felton?
I have one comment. I was on Better Together last week and I noticed that there is a, they're requesting public feedback on the France Avenue pedestrian crossing, which I think we should all tell our neighbors to weigh in on. They've got several options. Do we want a tunnel? Do we want an overpass? You know, or do we want to have kind of a grade level park with the cars going down? And I think it'd be great if, if we got our friends and family and us to comment on it, so they know our thoughts.
This is the portion of France Avenue that's between Macy's Building and the.
The 7200, 7250 France project.
Thank you.
That's a current survey out there, request now?
Yes, it's up on Better Together.
So the. Would like to see.
Would like to see.
Seeing no other member comments, I guess we'll move to Carrie's staff comments.
We were just noticing the comments are open on that... On the underpass, overpass, the street project there on France until November 10th. So there's still time to provide comment. Update on council actions. At their last meeting, the City Council did approve the Putt Shack and the Minnesota-made hockey facility. One thing in respect to this France Avenue issue that's up there, the Macy's project, you recall, we did a sketch plan for that project several months ago. They are still... They're evaluating some of the alternatives that are being considered for going over or potentially under. They may... They're looking at possibly revising plans to accommodate those alternatives. So we may, depending on how that all shakes out, they may be back for another sketch plan based on that arrangement with the underpass, overpass, whatever that may be. That's it for me.
Well... Commissioner Phil?
Where are we at on work plans? The City Council? Is that coming up on their future agenda?
We have made our recommendation to the council and the city manager. That will be the... I believe it's at the November 8th work session of the City Council. The city manager will then provide comments to the work plan and recommendation. And then ultimately, the City Council will approve the work plans at their meeting. I believe it's the first meeting in December. So we will keep you posted as to where that goes.
Carrie, I had just one. Any action or any developments on the Lifetime Tower?
Yeah, none that I am aware of. The last we had heard, they were still doing some, you know, based on the feedback that was provided, a sketch plan. Boy, that might be a year ago now. Making some revisions, potentially lowering the height, working on the site plan, but nothing... They haven't approached the city recently.
Okay.
It's up on the Lifetime website. There's a sketch of it, so... People have been asking me as well about it.
No other comments? I think... Well, as we... I would... Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I will motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded. All agree, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You nailed it, Liz.